My call of the year, June 28, 2022, regular meeting in the city of Orangeville. I approve the pleasure of the reasons, followed by my own second. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains us, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. We have a proposal to amend the agenda to add the Molyneux and Jenkins scope of services objectives. Do I hear a motion to add it to the agenda?
No move.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Qua.
Aye.
Ms. Knight.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Tran.
Nay.
Motion is serious. Well, I did that as item number four. My approval of the minutes, June 14th, regular meeting minutes, June 14th, work session minutes, and the June 21st, special meeting minutes, and that was in reference to the first public hearing for the budget of 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Sure, moved.
Right here, second.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight.
Mr. Mayor, could you please open to the discussion?
Sure.
Are you ready, Ms. Tran?
So, I have, yes. So, I have brought to the council attention two concerns in the meeting minutes for the regular session for June 14th. The first one is the second amendment will record it incorrectly. So, and here we'll have the motions were called. So, the motion was to clarify, as in the language say, that council plan to clarify the right to make the motion. What is recorded, council plan explained the motion, it wasn't explaining, it was a clarification of the right to make motion. And second, the roll call vote will make in the meeting, after the vote for item number one wasn't recorded. So, I'm asking the council to defer the approval and reveal how the meeting, how the meeting went and have the correct public record.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'm not asking, and that wasn't an amendment, I'm asking the council to consider before this approval. We aren't doing this question.
Any other discussion?
I would like to hear, yeah, opinion, Councilwoman Tran.
Got a word, Ms. Tran. Is there any other discussion? Would you like to make a motion, Ms. Tran?
Yes, I, in that case, I'm going to make the amendment motion. I'm making an amendment, and this is the first amendment motion. I'm making an amendment to add the following verbatim language to the meeting minutes on June 14th.
On the regular session?
The second amendment, the second amendment will record it incorrectly. Do I have a second?
Your eye ordered, Ms. Tran. But anyway, so there's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Qua.
Aye.
Ms. Tran.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Nay.
Ms. Knight.
Nay.
I vote nay as well. Motion is fixed. Going back to the original motion. I vote nay as well. Motion is fixed. Going back to the original motion.
I'm making the second amendment motion to add the following verbatim language to the meeting minutes on June 14th.
On the regular session?
The second amendment, the second amendment will record it incorrectly. Do I have a second?
Your eye ordered, Ms. Tran. But anyway, so there's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Qua.
Aye.
Ms. Tran.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Nay.
Ms. Knight.
Nay.
I vote nay as well. Motion is fixed. Going back to the original motion.
I'm making the second amendment motion to add the following verbatim language to the meeting minutes on June 14th. The second amendment will record it incorrectly in the meeting minutes.
Okay, so we're voting?
Yes, ma'am. A motion was made by Ms. Tran and was seconded by Mr. Qua, and it's your vote.
Yep.
Ms. Knight.
Nay.
I'm gonna, I vote nay as well. Motion is fixed. Going back to the original motion.
I'm making, I'm making the second amendment motion to add the following verbatim language to the meeting minutes on June 14th. The second amendment will record it incorrectly in the meeting minutes.
Okay, so we're voting?
Yes, ma'am. A motion was made by Ms. Tran and was seconded by Mr. Qua, and it's your vote.
Yep.
Ms. Knight.
Nay.
I'm gonna, I vote nay as well. Motion is fixed. Going back to the original motion.
I'm making, I'm making the second amendment motion to add the following verbatim language to the meeting minutes. Council plan clarified the right to make the motion is the second amendment motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Qua.
Aye.
Ms. Tran.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Nay.
Ms. Knight.
Nay.
I vote nay as well. Motion is fixed. Going back to the original.
I'm making the third amendment motion to add the following verbatim language to the minutes. Roll call vote will make after the vote for item one, and the meeting session is not recorded in the meeting minutes.
You appear to have a list of changes. Is this the last one, or would you like to add a few more?
I would want to make it separately, so when the minutes come out, the discussion they not be in the store.
Okay, yeah, go for it. I have a motion to have second.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Qua.
Aye.
Ms. Tran.
Aye.
Ms. Knight.
Nay.
Ms. Dean.
Nay.
I vote nay as well. Motion is fixed.
Making the third amendment motion to add the following verbatim language to the meeting on June 14th. The roll, the roll call vote was to add the regard that city failed to provide the exhibit B.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Qua.
Aye.
Ms. Tran.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Nay.
Ms. Knight.
Nay.
I vote nay as well. Motion is fixed. Do you have another one, Ms. Tran?
That's all, thank you.
Okay, going back to the original motion. All three, regular session, work session, special session. Do I hear a motion to approve? Because I think we did have, but I don't know if it worked again, just for the number example. But anyway, a motion to approve the original, um, second, and second through.
So moved, come on.
Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Knight.
Aye.
Ms. Qua.
Nay.
Ms. Tran.
Nay.
I split motion, minutes carried. Presentation, Lieutenant Phil, five-year service.
Thank the mayor, council members. Lieutenant Williams, come on up. The agenda says Lieutenant Bill, he actually has two names. Lieutenant William Williams, he's affectionately known as Bill Bill around the firehouse. But anyway, he's been with us for, he's been with us just over five years now. He's been in the fire service over 40 years. I know he doesn't look old enough to be in the fire service for 40 years, but when you start at age 14 as an explorer for the L.A. County Fire Department, that's how you get up to 40 years. So, anyway, he served in Monroe County Fire Department, he was in the Army for four years active duty, served in Desert Storm and Desert Shield, six years as a reservist. Been a lieutenant for a couple of years now, I believe. He's in charge of all of our small equipment, so when something gets broken, solves or whatever, he's the guy that handles the repairs. Recently, he went to Baltimore to take a class on how to maintain and repair a certification equipment. So, he's certified in that now, and that's going to save us almost $2,000 a year in maintenance costs on that equipment along. So, he's a huge asset to us, he's admired by his shift, and we're just glad he chose him for the fire department. So, I'll award you with your five-year service, too.
Sir, congratulations. Ordinance resolution, second reading of ordinance 2205, which is adopting a budget for fiscal year 23, for each fund of the city of Orangeville pursuant to Article 5, Section 5 of the Charter of the City, beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 3, 2023, appropriating the amount shown in each of the budgets as expenditures, adopting the item of anticipated funding sources. Pretending expenditures exceed appropriations and presuming expenditures exceeding actual funding sources. We already had a public hearing and a first reading. I'll throw up the floor for a discussion, if anybody has one. Does anybody have one? Do I hear a motion to approve the 2023, 2022, 2023 budget for the city of Orangeville? There's a motion, do I hear a second?
No move.
Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Qua.
Aye.
Ms. Knight.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Aye.
And Ms. Tran.
Aye.
Motion for a second. Going into item number, actually, item number three, where it's the Molyneux and Jenkins audit, as it was defined by the city manager. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I thought that was what item I got, ma'am.
Well, it was the one that we added to the agenda, and basically it's the cities and audit through your court.
The item number three, which is the Juneteenth holiday. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Dean. Her first reading of ordinance 22-06, Juneteenth holiday added to the 2023 calendar, and because it's a ordinance, we've had something on the books, but the city determined to advise an ordinance which is two reads better than just a resolution or a statement. And obviously, it's become a national holiday, a federal holiday that, it's a first read, which does not require a vote, but, you know, we did celebrate it, and the city was closed for 2022 as well. And we added to our calendar so that we have all of our bases covered. So, that's just all. So, that's your first read, and we'll have a second read in the next week. Now, we go on to the, thank you, ma'am. What's at the top, mine says, not as good as it used to. So, we go on to the next one, which is the audit for 2022, and it's by Molyneux and Jenkins, and it's a long time, soon auditor, CPA, well respected, and we have a contract here that we should enact. Do I hear a motion to accept the contract that presented by Molyneux and Jenkins?
No move.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make the amendment motion.
Go ahead.
I'm making another amendment motion to defer this approval of the audit engagement because it's just provided to the council and the meeting secretary sitting down for the meeting. It will be nothing from, we're not being clear on the car, so.
May I, may I interject, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Tran, when you speak of the, something that you are denying, don't, don't include the council, just use, use yourself as the example. Say aye, not we.
Ms. Tran.
The fact, the contract, the contract, the engagement was provided to all the council at this last minute, or this just provided to me at the last minute, and other council has been receiving ahead of me?
I love that.
Okay, so I still keep my amendment motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
You're not speaking for me. You're not speaking for Councilwoman Dean.
That's, that's very important. I'll lose you speaking for yourself. Do I hear a second? Hearing none, motion fixed. Going back to the original motion, which was properly seconded. Do I hear a motion to approve that, and the first one then second, do I hear a vote? So, Ms. Tran. Motion to approve that, and it's now a vote, Ms. Tran. Approved, doctor.
Aye.
Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Qua.
Aye.
And Ms. Tran.
Nay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a roll call vote here. I'm making a roll call vote, vote to add the following verbatim language to tonight's meeting minutes. The audit engagement will provided to me, Councilwoman Tran, at 6:39 P.M.
I don't even know what you're doing, ma'am. It's not a roll call vote. A roll call vote is where you basically, you know, you use up my consensus, which needs all of us in the room to agree. A roll call vote.
I'm calling that, that's the consent of trade, to talk about what we discussed.
Let me finish. A roll call vote is basically asking each member by name, what's your vote, is yes or no? You're entitled to your vote, you're entitled to your opinion, nobody's debating that. But it's not a roll call vote, as I said, your, the motion itself has been made, comments have been made, and it has passed, and general comments, which we're about to get to. You're welcome to make any statements you so desire. Okay?
No, sir, I'm making a motion here. It's not a comment, I'm making a motion to add the following verbatim language to the meeting minutes tonight, that the audit engagement will be provided to me at 6:39 P.M.
I'm a little out of my element on this, ma'am, even though I have this done, because I don't have an agenda item to actually do that, too.
It is, because this is a motion following the, the motion that we just made about the audit engagement. I'm not talking about anything that council have not approved to talk in public.
So, you're asking to, 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 we've already voted?
This is a separate motion, it's not an amendment motion. The amendment motion, it only be made after the, the second amendment and before the vote is done. This is a motion, it's not an amendment motion.
I don't know exactly where that fits in, but I'll tell you what, just for fun, do I have a second? Hearing none. Comment, motion, statement?
I'm making the second, I'm making the second motion to add the following verbatim language to tonight's meeting minutes. For the presentation in the work session, audit fee will be under submerged 41%.
Well, I can definitely tell you that you're testing the limits of what I think I understand about Robert's rules, but I'm going to give it a shot a second time. Is there anybody who would support that motion? Hearing none, that motion, comment, fails as well.
I'm making the last motion to add the following verbatim language to tonight's meeting minutes. The engagement, so, so the audit fee is not 41% and is the out of the budget.
And then, I didn't give it, I didn't understand, I didn't understand where, I did not hear the, the, Councilwoman Tran was saying.
Oh, okay, I, I apologize. I will request the recall motion. I'm calling for a motion to add the following verbatim language to tonight's meeting minutes. The engagement, so the audit fee is not 41% and is the out of the budget.
Anybody willing to second that motion? Motion bears. Okay. We are at general comments, so let's do general comments. Do I have general comments, or do you like this?
I have one, please. You got one? So, we had our blood drive last week, and I'd just like to thank, once again, Lionel Labade and Wayne Collins brought his group from the FED, and it was a huge help to our blood drive, so I really appreciate that volunteer stepping up. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
My turn.
Go ahead.
Hell, let's see, I got my guard's bill, I paid my guard's bill, then my guard's bill went up. I got all this, all this yellow stuff highlighted on here, you got to do this, you got to do that, leaves, grass flipping, and small yard wastings, down B place, and brown long bags. What was wrong with the plastic bags we were using?
I don't think the plastic bags were allowed, and that just reminded me of what the existing rules are.
Okay, so then my bill just went up $5.34, it took three people at Home Depot plus two customers to even find the stupid things. Sam's, get them in Sam's.
I think the city used to sell two, didn't they? They used to sell one garbage bag?
So, like in the three months, I don't know how much more to go up, but I'll be sure and let you know.
Well, goodness, we kind of love the first crack, right? So, let's try to figure out, there's a good place to economically buy whatever bags we require them to have, they shouldn't have to search the world over to find the bags, for goodness sake. But I do know it was related to the fact that they lived in a plastic bag, and a group of plastic bag people worked twice, I do know that. And I do know that there's some solutions, kind of, I believe, that maybe tie this all together and get a lot more efficient, I do know that. I wish we could solve all the garbage problems, I don't ever want to hear another garbage problem, but, you know, I got a feeling we're going to have to go through a little bit more chaos before we get to that. But we won't take it. Other comments? Hearing none. Now, Ms. Tran, this will be where comments can be made. Ms. Tran, you have any comments?
Oh, yeah. Well, congratulations on lieutenant and Bill for five years' service, and I would like to see you receiving the 10-year pin.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Other comments? Ms. Qua.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Knight.
No comments, thank you.
Ms. Dean.
Yes, I would also like to congratulate Lieutenant Bill for his service, and I'm receiving a five-year pin. Also, I would just like to say that I wanted to recognize and say that I am very happy that the state, federal, and city is recognizing the Juneteenth holiday. I appreciate the event that we, as a city, did, and gotten all kinds of comments from it, and so next year, I expect it will be even greater. So, thanks to all the city staff, they do an excellent job, and I really appreciate all the effort that went into it, and to Mayor and council as well, thank you for your participation for that event, and I was proud to be a citizen of tomorrow.
Okay, ma'am.
And that's it, for me.
All right. My first one is to congratulate Councilman Qua on his birthday.
Happy birthday!
And, ma'am, two meetings ago, a month ago, we, you know, in the executive session, we had some manning work today discussing, we had, and I think we should do, finish that.
Right. Advised council, we're not going, they were going during the executive session to discuss salary, we can talk performance evaluations, we can talk about hiring, termination, things along the lines of that. Specifically, the sound is going to have to be something, you know, I believe there are some discussions, either have happened or will happen to reach a consensus, I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know.
So, if we're not, if we did not, we have something we're untrun at, we're not going to go to the secretary, the student, the unit to discuss about that? Are you saying that we're doing, discussing that in openly?
Because some of the people may get in the sort of, and I'm not sure that's a good idea to kind of go through that.
I mean, I'm, I'm suggest the members of the council to talk to themselves.
Then let's talk about, we gather all the information that we ask, and we put it on the chair that notify public, that we're going to discuss that in the next council meeting.
I would encourage each member of the council to be able to reach a consensus before we put it in the table.
We are not supposed to do that, we are not supposed to make the decision behind public.
I didn't say make the decision behind public, you're going to have to vote on it, but the point being is reach a consensus, because having a real, real session right here at the council is not a good idea, it's not good politics, it's not good for your voice.
It is simple, and we will talk about it, and we would love to finish it, you know, something that's unfair to, you know, whatever form of discussion, executive or open meeting, whatever we indicate, so you tell me what I need to do, I mean, what's all got, we done it last minute, but this wasn't done last minute, this minute, and then just give me a set of time, or how will I deal with it? I mean, I have my input to the city management already, so, but I don't think there's a consensus settled for this.
Okay? And so.
So, we have two council, we want to talk about that, and it's two council buildings being blocked, basically because of, because we make decisions.
And then, so should we have to get together, talk, are you forming a meeting for us to talk? I mean, I don't know how.
There's nothing I keep talking to another member of the city council, that's kind of the point, is, you know, have a conversation, so, you know, if you have a number, you know, try to reach a consensus, depending on what the number is, you know, at some point. You know, at some point, you have to have three people to vote to support it, and I think you could reach a consensus, I'm fairly confident you can reach a consensus. And I would encourage you to reach a consensus. I don't know, but I would encourage you to just throw it on the floor and see what sticks. I'm not sure that's a good idea.
Well, I would try, I mean, it's something that I think it's needed to be done. It's unfindable to be done, and you know, we, I don't see why we sit in a clack of a million discussions about every single other employee, but not this one.
Okay.
We, you know, you can tell me to do that, I would chat to people and see what they thought of.
Reach consensus, I think you'll be pleased with results.
Okay.
The
I appreciate it, so you let me know, and I'll go on my
Other things easy, I'm glad. I'm sorry.
Mayor LeFol, if I might, if I might make a comment, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I think as council, we have to understand communication is one of our greatest tools to understanding. To the mayor's point, it's not about having a full conversation where you're making, making a decision. It's having a conversation to understand perspective. We do have the opportunity for that. I think I need the council to understand that our upcoming council retreat, based off of some of the comments that were made in this meeting this evening, it's critical. The council retreat to understand functioning, authority, your role, it is critical. Based off of some of the comments that were made this evening, there may, need to be a conversation for consideration of having the city attorney in some form or fashion attend either both meetings or one meeting, so that we are not driving ourselves off the rails into inappropriate territory. But communication is an effective tool that we need to, we need to stretch our muscles, and we need to get back to that space. That's my comment, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
July second are two big events. Just to kind of reiterate what they are. The one on July second is our Fourth of July, you know, big fireworks, pretty cool little man. I think you'll have a decent, not a decent, but we got the district, big fireworks presentation. Kids, we've got some local barbecue guys that are out there cooking, they'll be very impressed with that. A DJ, a K-pop band for kind of the underground, I think that would be something that's a little bit and some food tents and some other stuff, I think that would be good. Then the next day is our night market, and we consolidated to put them back to back, to be honest, to try to get some economies where we already had the stage set up and other things. And it's already the Fourth of July weekend, it's an international food festival, is really what it comes down to. We do have an assortment of talent, so we've got Soul Cartel. We have Hispanic groups, I don't know if I can remember the two names, but it's two different groups coming in. And then we've got a famous singer coming in from California to New York. And the food will be from, it'll be authentic, we've got a little bit of everything. So for Fourth of July weekend, whether you get one day or two, strongly encourage you to come tell your friends, this will be good family entertainment, and I think you're proud. The district looks good, it was out there today, the, kind of the destruction, if you will, will be hard to notice by that time that the picture be down, so. And we had some shade plant, and it looks like it might be a couple umbrellas for some rain, so we'll see how it all goes. But either way, we'll have to be tough with that. And then my last comment is really this. You know, there's a Robert's Rules Award, it's not a complicated one. You could get, I guess, if they, if you might want to. But it's really just designed to help you facilitate a meeting, you know? You have to have a group of people who agree with you. You know, you can talk all day long, but that doesn't necessarily mean much unless you have somebody who agrees with your point. And if you drag it out to a long period of time, reasonable people stop listening. And you may even have a good point one day, you know? But if you want them to listen to the point, and make sure you can explain the point, and be able to counter a lot from there. It's a good idea, and, you know, the, some of what you saw tonight, I think, is not in Robert's Rules Award. But the theory is, nobody wants to shut you down. Nobody wants to kick you out of the meeting, nobody wants to tell you you got thirty seconds to talk. We've all seen, you know, people that do that, that's not well respected. So we want you to have your opinion, and if it is your opinion, then you have a right as a council member still. You know, but don't go so far as to take advantage of the rest of the group when, you know, a little bit of courtesy, I think is important. And read the Robert's Rules of Order, if you want to get into something, and you got it for me. I'm not claiming I'm an expert, but I think I can find my way around it. Members of the case, Eric, we can always ask Siri or Google it if you got it, we'll figure it out. But even then, just because you have the ability to go by book, you still need two other people to agree with you. And that again is open lines of communication, what is it you're trying to accomplish? What are we trying to do? No one's hiding anything, we're right here in front of everybody. Or, you know, the tall people who watch us on YouTube every week, you know, maybe. It's just a little bit of common sense, a little courtesy of your friends. That being said, you all have a good evening.